Saint Joseph County Council, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for invocation which will be given by Executive Pastor Steve Huffman of the Vineyard Church in Mishawaka and the founder of Project Warm, a homeless ministry in downtown South Bend.
Lord, it says in your word that by your power, kings reign, rulers issues decrees that are just, and by you, Lord, princes govern all who rule on the earth. And you love those who love you and those who seek you and find you. And so, Father, I pray tonight that you help us recognize where your hand is at work. I pray that you help all those deciding any agenda item tonight see what you're doing. And I pray for the meeting tonight and every agenda item that the most amount of wisdom that we need to lead this city well is given by you. Father, I pray for unity tonight, for anyone speaking, for anyone considering any agenda item. I pray for unity for this meeting and for this city. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you very much. Next, our petitions communications and missing matters, Mr. Nolan.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Belinda Gillespie and Patty Kindler to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, nominations are now closed. Do I hear a second to that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Belinda Gillespie and Patty Kindler are reappointed to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the December seventh, two thousand and twenty-one meeting and the January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two public meeting? Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the December seventh, two thousand twenty-one and the meeting from January fourth, two thousand twenty-two are approved. Next on the agenda, report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Report from county commissioners? No report. Report from any council special committee? Hearing none. Next on the agenda, our first readings. Clerk, will you please read Bill number one dash twenty-two?
Bill number one dash twenty-two, Saint Joseph County Public Nuisance Ordinance, petitioner area plan commission.
Bill number one twenty-two is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Clerk, will you please read, please read the next bill, Bill number two dash twenty-two?
Bill number two dash twenty-two, an ordinance providing for the removal and disposal of abandoned vehicles in enforcement of Indiana Code nine dash twenty-two dash one by the Saint Joseph County Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth within the unincorporated areas of Saint Joseph County and creating a fund for the purpose of implementing the provisions of this ordinance. Petitioner Area Plan Commission.
Bill number two dash twenty-two is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Please read the next bill, sir.
Bill number three dash twenty-two, Saint Joseph County Weed and Rank Vegetation Control Ordinance, petitioner area plan commission.
Bill number three dash twenty-two is assigned to the Land Use Planning Commission. Please read the next bill.
Bill number four dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the Saint Joseph County Council amending Title fifteen, Chapter one fifty-four, land usage of Saint Joseph County Code to add contractor yard as a permitted use in the C Commercial District and revise outdoor storage development standards in C Commercial District, petitioner Saint Joseph County Area Plan Commission.
Bill number four dash twenty-two is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next on the agenda, our resolutions. Clerk, will you please read Bill number one sixty dash twenty-one?
Bill number one sixty dash twenty-one, Fifth Amendment to the Saint Joseph County Police Retirement Plan, petitioner Sheriff.
Petitioner.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, this is a follow-up to the three-year wage agreement that the council and commissioners and the sheriff and the FOP agreed upon in November and was passed in December. This, this bill would amend the county police pension plan. The council, as the fiscal body of the county, is required to approve through a resolution any change to the county police pension plan which results in some kind of funding change. This adds the two and a half percent employee pay for any new hires after January one of two thousand twenty-two to the plan. And we would ask for your support of the resolution and the amendment to the plan. It has been passed by the county police pension board previously.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on Bill number one sixty dash twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on one sixty dash twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to pass Bill number one sixty dash twenty-one was made by Councilman Katanzarite. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Are there any further comments from any council member in regards to Bill one sixty dash twenty-one? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Teloian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki online or?
Yep.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
And Mr. Root?
Yes.
And Mr. Morton?
Yes.
The bill passes by a vote of nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one sixty dash twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda, Bill number five dash twenty-two?
Bill number five dash twenty-two, a res- a resolution of the Saint Joseph County Special Victims Unit in a local agreement, petitioners, sheriff and prosecutor.
Petitioner.
Thank you, council. I didn't do my name and address last time. My name is Troy Warner with the Sheriff's Department. I have office four oh one, West Sample Street. Is Mr. Cotter there if he would like to start and kick this off?
I, I am Troy. Ken Cotter, prosecutor, tenth floor, county city building. This is a resolution between the city of South Bend, the city of Mishawaka, and the county police department and the county prosecutor's office, certainly through the councils in, in which we would investigate crimes of child abuse, sex offenses, in order to properly handle those, ensure that our victims get the justice that they need and that we hold those perpetrators accountable. This is frankly a smaller version of what we have had in the past of the Special Victims Unit. The different, part of the difference is that we would no longer, that unit would no longer be investigating crimes of domestic violence. It is smaller. And it would also, we would have a more formal coordination with the Casey Center, the YWCA, and the Family Justice Center to ensure that the, our understanding as law enforcement officers, our understanding of the victims is taken into account in how we handle those cases. It would also include two officers from the South Bend Police Department, one officer from the County Police Department, one officer from the Mishawaka Police Department, and then three investigators that the city of South Bend would pay for and that the prosecutor's office, because of our ability to hire investigators, would then conduct those investigations along with the commander. I, I believe that the Sheriff's Department is in favor of this. Prosecutor's Office is asking that the council then approve that resolution that has already been approved by the city of South Bend and the city of Mishawaka. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
One question.
Ms. Hess?
You said that it no longer covered victims of domestic violence. It, it used to do that, and why is not, why isn't it now?
It was a manpower issue from the city of South Bend. If you recall, we actually had, we were going to be just completely disbanding that unit. The, there was a lot of conversations between law enforcement along with the Family Justice Center, the YWCA, and those two advocacy centers are directly related towards the investigations of domestic violence. This was frankly the best that we could come up with with manpower concerns. Personally, I'm hopeful that we'll be coming back to you in the near future and maybe we can get the manpower back up and frankly, we can get the band back together again completely. But I'll take a little bit versus none at all.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill five dash twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill five.
Wait, wait, I put my hand down.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, Ms. Clay's. Go ahead.
I don't know if I'm speaking for or against the bill. I do know that the Family Justice Center started because I was involved in the opening in two thousand eight as a one-stop shop for all of those services. And that was critical. The county got a million dollars for that. I hate to see this breaking up. So, Mr. Cotter, I really hope that this all-inclusive agency can be returned to its former glory as soon as possible. So, I just needed to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else present or online that would like to speak in favor of Bill five dash twenty-two? Is there anyone present or online that would wish to speak in opposition of Bill five twenty-two? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on the bill. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Second. Motion to pass Bill number five dash twenty-two was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments from council on this bill?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzarite?
Much like, much like what Ms. Clay's had to say, I, I would agree. Being back in the council at that time when this unit was formed, we spent an inordinate amount of time debating the Family Justice Center. And we committed a lot of resources to it fiscally and otherwise, and I, and I think it's been a success story, much like it was in other communities. And I do agree with her sentiment that we hopefully, and like prosecutor Cotter said, let's get the band back together eventually and, and put it to its full, full funding and, and full staffing like it did before. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from any council member on five twenty-two? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Teloian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
And Raphael, Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Bill passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Let's, I've been, Bobby, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
I'm used to it.
Bill passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record.
Kind of late getting on the bus.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number five twenty-two is passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda, our salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read Bill number one forty-eight twenty-one?
Bill number one, one forty-eight twenty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six dash twenty, the same being ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-one, combined with Bill number one forty-five dash twenty-one, a petitioner auditor.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hess, committee, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number one forty-eight twenty-one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
John Murphy, Chief Deputy Auditor with offices on the second floor. This proposed salary ordinance allows us to hire two part-time temporary clerks in the property tax division of our offices, office. They're catching up on corrections, refunds, and a lot of net assessment value changes that come in at the end of the year. There won't be any trouble. We won't ask for any additional funding for this. We have a, an unfilled position currently. The grant accountant position is unfilled, so we'll be able to use that money plus save. We have a person that's out on unpaid leave at the moment as well, so be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open a public, public hearing on Bill number one forty-eight twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill, either present or online? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of one forty-eight twenty-one? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval, second.
Motion to pass Bill number one forty-eight twenty-one was made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Teloian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
And Mr. Morton?
Yes.
The bill passes nine zero.
Let the record show that Bill number one forty-eight twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda, Bill number one forty-six twenty-one?
Bill number one forty-six dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six dash twenty, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-one, petitioner Health Department.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please.
President Morton, Bill one forty-six twenty-one comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Petitioner?
Yes, this is Amy Rupe, Administrator with the Department of Health with offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building. And we are wanting to transfer some funds, unused funds. We are going from two directors of nursing down to one, and we are using those extra funds to increase the salary for our nurses on staff.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on Bill number one forty-six twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill as a present or online? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed on Bill one forty-six twenty-one. May I have a motion on the bill?
For approval.
Motion to pass Bill number one forty-six twenty-one was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on one forty-six twenty-one? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Teloian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
And President Morton?
Yes.
The bill passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one forty-six dash twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number one forty-seven twenty-one?
Bill number one forty-seven dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-one, petitioner Health Department.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, Bill one forty-seven twenty-one comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Yes, we have unused funds within the Health COVID Vaccinations Fund for community health worker that we have since been funded through the CDC. So, we would like to use those funds to increase the pay of our part-time nurses as well as have a nurse go from part-time to full-time.
Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Oh, Amy Rupe, Administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the petitioner from council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number one forty-seven twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of one forty-seven twenty-one, either present or online? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of one forty-seven twenty-one? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number one forty-seven dash twenty-one was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Katanzarite. Any further comments from any council member in regards to one forty-seven twenty-one?
I've got a question. Does this, put this in place for all of two thousand twenty-two, this amount, these amounts?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from any council member? On one forty-seven twenty-one? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Teloian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
And President Morton?
Yes.
Bill passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one forty-seven dash twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number one fifty dash twenty-one?
Bill number one fifty dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-one, Health Department?
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, Bill one fifty twenty-one comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Amy Rupe, Administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor. And this is a new grant that we have been funded to continue our fetal infant mortality review team. This is getting the salary set up for maternal infant health coordinator as well as the femur coordinator.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on Bill one fifty dash twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill, either present or online? Ms. Heckman?
Yes, Cynthia Heckman Davis, Wackerton, Indiana. I would speak in favor of this bill. Our infant mortality rate remains high and we could use more help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of Bill one fifty dash twenty-one? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of Bill number one fifty twenty-one? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on the bill. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number one fifty dash twenty-one was, was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Katanzarite. Motion to pass bill number one fifty dash twenty-one was was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Katanzerite. Any further counsel discussion on one fifty dash twenty-one? Hearing our clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzerite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
President Morton.
Yes.
And Mr. Tullian, I miss you.
Yep.
Bill passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number one fifty dash twenty-one is passed by a unanimous vote of nine zero. Clerk, will you please? Read the next bill on the agenda, sir. Bill number one fifty-four twenty-one?
Bill number one fifty-four dash twenty-one and ordinance establishing, ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty. The same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-one. A Health Department.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner.
Yes, Amy Rupe, Administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building. And this is the fund that we have received for the COVID vaccinations that we have administered. And we would like to set up new employees in our department and utilize those funds.
Thank you very much. Any questions from counsel? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on bill number one fifty-four twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill, either present or online? Is there anyone that wish that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on one five four twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
For passage.
Second.
Motion to pass bill number one fifty-four twenty-one was made by Councilman Kenarecki. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Hearing that, Mr. Murphy, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tullian.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite.
Yes.
And President Morton.
Yes.
The bill passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number one fifty-four dash twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number one five three twenty-one?
Bill number one five three dash twenty-one and ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six dash twenty, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-one. Circuit Court.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, bill one fifty-three twenty-one comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner.
Thank you, President Morton, members of the council. Lisa Plensner, Saint Joseph Circuit Court Administrator with offices in Courthouse One, one oh one South Main Street. This is a relatively simple ordinance. We are asking to convert an administrative assistant position to a court reporter position.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel? Ms. Plensner? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on bill one fifty-three twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill, either present or online? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on bill one five three twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to pass bill number one five three dash twenty-one was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Hearing our clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tullian.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite.
Yes.
And Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
And President Morton.
Yes.
The bill passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number one fifty-three twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda? Bill number one forty-nine twenty-one?
Bill number one forty-nine twenty-one and ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six dash twenty, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-one. Petitioner, Prosecutor?
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, bill one forty-nine twenty-one comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, council members. This is a grant from the legislature that would give Saint Joseph County for two years, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. That would allow us to expand our high-tech crime unit, allowing us to investigate some of the most complicated crimes. I take that back. Some of the most complicated investigations. Our abilities to be able to look at the technology that the world is providing everyone and be able to help us determine whether or not crimes had occurred by analyzing that and then converting that back to the detectives to make it part of the case itself. We have a very robust and very good high-tech crime unit. This allows us to expand, at least according to the grant, asking us to expand so that that would include eight other counties as well as expanding the uses that we have for us here in Saint Joseph County. Some of that has to do with the, not just the technology, but also the, I'll call it gizmos that they utilize to be able, the students and the investigators utilize to be able to determine whether or not folks have committed crime. That it costs the county no additional funds. This is all a state grant. After two years, if that grant goes away, then those things that we would be utilizing it for the investigators as well as the gizmos would also go away. I'd ask for approval of this request.
Thank you very much. Any questions from counsel for the petitioner? Hearing none. I'm sorry.
One question. Is gizmo, is that a official prosecutorial?
My, 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 my kids would be impressed that I actually use that as opposed to the things that I say at home. I'm sixty, so it's sometimes hard for me to recognize that the world is starting to pass some of us by. At the same token, it's kind of nice to be able to see that we can interrelate with the kids by having us join together and trying to understand this technology. But I don't ask me to spell it.
I wouldn't think of.
Any other questions from counsel? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on bill forty-nine twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Either present or online? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. I'll close. I'll close the public hearing on bill number one forty-nine twenty-one. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
For approval.
Second.
A motion to pass bill number one forty-nine twenty-one was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tullian.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
And President Morton.
Yes.
Bill passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number one forty-nine twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda? Bill number one fifty-one twenty-one?
Bill number one fifty-one twenty-one and ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six dash twenty. The same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-one. Petitioner, Prosecutor?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, bill one fifty-one twenty-one comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Ken Carter, prosecutor, tenth floor county city building. Council members, this is a request to hire a person to frankly handle the body worn camera stuff, I won't say gizmos this time, from the police departments as well as the MVRs. That's from the police vehicles themselves. We are getting inundated with it. Every now police officer is being equipped with a body worn camera. By law, any case in which I file a criminal charge, I have to get a copy of that, convert it, and get it to defense counsel. We don't have enough resources to be able to do it the way we have. I'm using pre-trial. I'm asking the council to approve my use of pre-trial diversion funds to hire that person. So that would not cost the county any additional funds from the general fund or from anything else that you have the ability to be able to control. This is pre-trial diversion funds. Discretionary funds that a prosecutor has. I've talked to my folks and frankly, this is important enough to be able to spend the seventy-eight thousand dollars a year that it would cost to not only hire the person, but all the fringe benefit. So that we can ensure that defense counsel gets those videos, that they're properly transmitted and that we're able to use them in court. I therefore ask for approval of this request.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from counsel for Mr. Carter? Hearing none. I will open the public hearing on bill one fifty-one twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on bill one fifty-one twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
For her second? Motion to pass bill number one five one twenty-one was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Hearing our clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tullian.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
And President Morton.
Yes.
The bill passes nine zero.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Let the bill, let the record show that bill number one fifty-one twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number one fifty-five twenty-one?
Bill number one fifty-five twenty-one and ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty. The same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-one. Portage Manor.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please.
President Morton, bill one fifty-five twenty-one comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner.
This is Patty Gatsi. I am president of the board of directors of Portage Manor. As you may remember, we came to you last month for an increase for the director and the position of a new director. This is just appropriating this money for the year twenty twenty-two as it was not included in our budget.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel for Ms. Gatsi?
Yeah, what, what's it? Why wasn't it included in your budget?
We honestly didn't realize until we started. First of all, the, there was always an assistant director until a few years ago, and the previous director removed the assistant without knowledge of the board. We are implementing that back, especially with the new building of Portage Manor and the additional responsibility on the administrator. The administrative assistant has always been needed. Our administrative director, I apologize, has always been needed. So we're just asking that to be put back in, just like we asked for in December.
Any other questions from counsel? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on bill number one fifty-five twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone, anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on one fifty-five twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
Just, I'd like to clarify something first. Patty, on the front page of the bill, the current is forty-three thousand, five hundred and thirteen, and to read fifty-one thousand, but then on the Form D, this this isn't adding up, is it? For reporters two.
It should be ninety thousand for the administrator and seventy-five thousand for the assistant administrator. I'm not sure what you have in front of you. I'm at the one that that originally prepared it.
You know what? I found out my problem. I'm working ahead. I'm on, I'm on the next one. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What was the salary of your last administrator, the one that left us?
I believe it ended at seventy-five. She decreased it a couple of times. Again, without approval of the board. You guys finally said, no, she couldn't do that. And I, to reiterate what we had said at previous meetings, people are still way over that ninety thousand that we're asking.
So you're saying we went from seventy-five to ninety thousands? That's what you're saying?
Correct. And that's still above, that's still less than what people are already making.
Yeah, it's a very decent raise, I would say.
Dick, I think it goes from eighty thousand to ninety-five thousand.
I'm sorry, that is, that is a new, you guys did the, the raises. And I haven't never have seen that new budget.
Right.
So the number is ninety-five thousand.
The total, right. The number is ninety.
Ninety. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I, well, the ordinance reads ninety-five thousand for the maximum for the director pays.
From eighty to ninety.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John.
They could pay less if they, you know, wanted to.
Any other questions from counsel? Do I hear a motion on bill number one fifty-five twenty-one? Move for approval? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number one fifty-five twenty-one. It's made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Katanzerite. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Ms. Gatsi, just to clarify what Mr. Murphy just reiterated, that ninety-five thousand is a, is the max. You could choose to pay less. Is that what I heard you say, sir, or no?
Yes.
Okay. And this is also stipulated on the increased duties that will come with the anticipation of a new building. Is that also correct, ma'am? Ms. Gatsi? Or does that have to do with increased duties regardless of?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I had you muted. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. But it's, yeah, it's all the work that's going behind. Working on doing all this building and everything going forward. And, and looking at all around us, we are so well underneath what everybody's getting paid.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from counsel on one fifty-five twenty-one? Hearing our clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tullian.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
And President Morton.
Yes.
The bill passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number one fifty-five twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number one fifty-six twenty-one?
Bill number one fifty-six dash twenty-one and ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six dash twenty, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-one. Petitioner, Superior Court.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, bill one fifty-six twenty-one comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner.
Ally Rubel, the Superior Court Administrator with offices at one oh one South Main Street in Courthouse One. In our initial budget request, we had reduced the total time allotment for two of our court reporters. Court needs have changed slightly given. Court needs have changed slightly, given all of the turnover and the case allocation plan. And we would like to restore those two full-time positions. We are also asking for a new bailiff position. We have a new judge in the Civil Division of the Superior Court, and that new bailiff position will allow that judge to have a full staff. So I therefore ask that you approve our request.
Thank you very much. Any questions from counsel for the petitioner?
Yeah, one. This was the question I was asking. Obviously, she had no answer for. So on the Form D, and what's on the front here for the court reporters, aren't the same number? The number that we're looking for is nine thousand and something, right?
Yes, nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven.
Okay.
Initially, it was approximately fourteen thousand, but that has been reduced. Our total ask is forty-three thousand, one oh two.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from counsel for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on one fifty-six twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill, either present or online? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of one fifty-six twenty-one? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on the bill. Do I hear a motion?
Vote for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number one fifty-six twenty-one was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Taloyan?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Mr. Katanz, right?
With great reluctance, I will vote yes on this.
Okay. Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Is he taking applications now, or is he been, is the new judge?
He said yes, Bobby. I asked him that earlier.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Mr. Nolan?
Yes, as long as it's not Bobby Kay.
Mr. File? President Morton?
Yes.
The bill passes with eight affirmative votes and one abstention.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one fifty-six twenty-one was passed by a vote of eight favorable and with one abstention. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number one fifty-two twenty-one?
Bill number one fifty-two twenty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six dash twenty, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-one. Petitioner, County Parks?
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number one fifty-two dash twenty-one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much, sir. Petitioner?
Steve Sloss, Executive Director for the Saint Joseph County Parks Department with offices at Saint Patrick County Park in South Bend. Basically, this is an additional appropriation to help cover the new minimum wage that the council set earlier in the year, or late last year, I should say, and allows us to pay all our seasonal and part-time maintenance rangers, gatekeepers, seasonal kids, the new minimum wage. It'll come from the existing parks levy, really won't cost the county any more additional money, just appropriating money that we already have in our existing levy. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to help.
Thank you very much. Any questions from counsel?
But is there, there's a difference between full-time and part-time, right?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know what the part-time.
Right, but the, the minimum wage said that we had to pay even our part-time and seasonal people. They wanted us to pay that new minimum wage of, for our case, on a forty-hour work week, it's fifteen thirty-eight an hour.
Which is minimum wage for the full-time people?
No, the minimum, well, yeah, it's the same. Essentially, it's the same.
Any other questions from counsel for the petitioner? Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on Bill number one fifty-two twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on one fifty-two twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number one fifty-two twenty-one was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Taloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanz, right?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
And President Morton?
Yes.
The bill passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one fifty-two dash twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have public hearing and public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment. Clerk, will you please read Bill number one forty-five twenty-one?
Bill number one forty-five dash twenty-one, an ordinance appropriating and transferring money, monies for the purpose herein specified for several departments here enlisted of Saint Joseph County Government.
They have a motion on Bill number one forty-five twenty-one?
Vote for approval.
Do I hear a second? A motion to pass Bill number one forty-five twenty-one was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on one forty-five twenty-one? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanz, right?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Taloyan?
Yes, except for Q, which I abstain.
Except for Q, which you abstain. Okay, and then President Morton?
Yes.
The bill passes nine zero, except for Q, with one abstention.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one forty-five twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero, except for item Q, which we had one abstention. Next, we have public hearing and public comment on the American Rescue Plan Fund. These American Rescue Plan Fund financial issues were heard and discussed at our December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue under the American Rescue Plan Fund on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue under the American Rescue Plan Fund on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read Bill number one five-seven twenty-one?
Bill number one five-seven twenty-one, an ordinance appropriating monies from the American Rescue Plan Fund for the purpose herein specified for the several departments here enlisted of Saint Joseph County Government.
May I have a motion on Bill number one fifty-seven twenty-one?
Vote for approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass Bill number one five-seven twenty-one was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Taloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanz, right?
Yes.
President Morton?
Yes.
The bill passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one five-seven dash twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, under miscellaneous, we have Bill number one forty-one dash twenty-one. Clerk, will you please read that bill?
Bill number one forty-one dash twenty-one, creating a new fund for the receipt of funding from the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council, as authorized by the Indiana General Assembly in twenty twenty-one. Petitioner, prosecutor?
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please.
President Morton, Bill one forty-one twenty-one comes at a council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carter?
Ken Carter, prosecutor, tenth floor County City Building. You need a place to put the money that the legislature is giving us for high-tech. That's what this forms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from counsel for Mr. Carter? Hearing none, I'll open a public hearing on Bill number one forty-one twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill, either here presently or online? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on one forty-one twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
Approval.
We're second. Motion to pass Bill number one forty-one twenty-one. It's made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing that, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Root? Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Taloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanz, right?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
President Morton?
Yes.
The bill passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one forty-one twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Next on the agenda is new business. Mr. Murphy?
I can take this. John Murphy, Chief Deputy Auditor, offices on the second floor. We've just, we've, I believe emailed to each of you, or you received it through Jen, a list of outstanding purchase orders at December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Couple of years ago, Mr. Dalton reminded us that we needed to present this information to you at a public hearing. The reason that's important is because the outstanding purchase orders carry forward the budget with it, so we want to make sure we only have accurate purchase orders at December thirty-first. The total amount is at twelve thirty-one, twenty-one is eight million, eight oh seven, eight fifteen, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. That sounds like a lot. It is a lot. When I was at the city of South Bend, we averaged probably about twenty to thirty million dollars in outstanding purchase orders. At the end of twenty twenty, it was ten million, one hundred and eleven thousand, so it's a little slightly less. It's kind of an indication of projects that are ongoing at the, at the end of the year. So wanted to submit that report. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from counsel for Mr. Murphy?
I have the same question I've asked all the other auditors. Why don't we have to acknowledge the average purchase orders, only the outstanding purchasers?
Because we, we only do the best at Saint Joseph County.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes.
I didn't get an answer.
Mr. Nolan said he didn't get an answer. Next item is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes on items not on tonight's agenda. Hearing none. May I have a motion? Uh-oh. No, okay. May I have a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Close.
Hi.
It's adjourned. Thank you.